Carolina County Planning Commission for Thursday, September 26, 2024. I would invite everyone to join me in pledge of allegiance to the flag of our country. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. By way of introduction, we will start on my far right with Mr. Richard Williams representing Western Carolina. To his left is Mr. George Weaver representing Madison. To my right, our vice chair, Mr. J.D. Young representing Reedy Church. My name is Bob Schwartz. I am the chairman representing Bowling Green. Dr. Carol Horton is normally to my left, however, she is out of state and unavailable. On the far left is Mr. Steve Rollins representing the Matapania District. Commissioners, the first item on our agenda is the approval of minutes. Have you all had occasion to review the minutes as presented? Are there any additions or corrections? There being none, is there a motion regarding the minutes from August 22, 2024?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the minutes as stated for August 22, 2024.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Young, seconded by Mr. Williams. Any further discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those nay, there being unanimous vote, the minutes are approved as presented. Subdivisions, we have SB 042024, Burley Residential Land LLC owner applicant. Mr. Pennington, our county planner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. First subdivision tonight is SB 042024. Applicants requesting preliminary plat approval, preliminary plat approval for Belmont North subdivision. Proper amendment, RZ 012023 was approved by the Board of Supervisors in 2020, in September 2023 to enable 526 parcels into Belmont North subdivision. This plat creates 190 townhouse lots, 52 villa lots, 284 single-family detached lots for a total of 526 new lots. Plat contains 61% open space, which is above the 15% open space requirement. Preliminary plat is consistent with Caroline County zoning and subdivision ordinance and is a by right subdivision. Staff recommends approval of the preliminary plat at this time.
Mr. Pennington, I believe this came up last month and there were four items of concern.
That's the rezoning case. This is a subdivision plat. It's new business.
Thank you. Commissioners, are there any questions of Mr. Pennington? Does the applicant wish to speak? It's not necessary. Commissioners, any discussion regarding SB 042024?
I had a question on, in looking at the map of the layout of the property. I wanted to know about the property line where, which runs off of Moncur. As to where does the property line end? So does it end at Terrell Road, Great Falls, Macduff? So where about is that property line at for the front part of the subdivision?
Yeah, I'll let the applicant answer the questions regarding the design of the plat.
Good evening, sir. And if you would just state your name for the record, please.
Yeah, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Bruce Reese. I'm the engineer on this project, legacy engineering, and here representing the owner of Burley Properties. And I think the best way to answer your question is to direct you to sheet five of the plans, which is a boundary survey of the entire property. And it would show you that, that Macduff comes in approximately halfway along that northwestern property line. So if it helps, it's this, it's this sheet here. Sheet five, and it's a boundary survey of the entire property.
Okay, so when I come on to Moncur off of Lewis and Clark, you're saying that when I, just before getting to Macduff is where the property line is for the subdivision?
Macduff would be about halfway into the property. So as far as you went into to get to Macduff, you'd have that much further to go to the
And does the property run all the way to the road at Cool, Cool Springs, Cool Water Drive? So the property runs all the way to that highway?
No, sir, it does not. It does not go that far south.
Okay.
Sir, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, on the sheet where you located sections A, B, C, D, and so forth.
Yes, sir.
Subdued, there is a farm in the top right corner. Is that the Terrell Farm?
And for that, I'll refer to Jim.
Yes, sir. That's what it looked like to me. I just wanted to be sure that I had it orientated correctly. No questions for Mr. Williams, Mr. Weaver? And I'm not rushing anyone. I'm just trying to ask the thing. Mr. Young?
No questions.
All right, I have no questions. Mr. Rollins, anything further, sir?
No, sir.
All right, this being in the Matapania District and you being the Matapania representative, do you have a motion you would care to make?
Mr. Chairman, I can make a motion that we approve the preliminary plat for SB 042024.
Motion by Mr. Rollins, seconded by Mr. Weaver for approval. Is there any further discussion? There being no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. This matter will be forwarded to the Board of Supervisors with a recommendation of approval. And we thank you, sir. RZ 032024, Belmont subdivision. Mr. Pennington.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. For RZ 032024, unfinished business for the Belmont Villa subdivision, an update has been provided to your staff report. The applicant has made the requested changes by the planning commission from the previous meeting on clearing up the conflicts on the GDP and the architecturals. Now, the dwellings are labeled as two-story dwellings with one-car garages. Colonel Armistead Drive has been changed back into a public road as requested, and the driveways have been extended from 18 feet before the sidewalk to 20 feet before the sidewalk to allow for oversized vehicles. The only proffer change that has been made is the removing of the maintenance of Colonel Armistead Drive, as that is now a public road on the GDP, and so the maintenance of that would not be required any longer. And so those are the only changes to the plat.
Thank you, sir. And I believe this is the one that we had voiced about four concerns, and those concerns have been happily addressed and.
Yes, that's correct. This was case was deferred at the last meeting with the four items I just mentioned. And then, of course, the proffer had to be changed with the maintenance of Colonel Armistead Drive, with that being removed from private to public.
All right, sir. Commissioners, any further questions of Mr. Pennington? Yes, sir, it is. And I don't know if Mr. Wilton, is that Mr. Wilton out there? If he would.
Mr. Wilton's under the weather today. His partner, Mr. Ferris, is here.
All right. Sir, is there anything you would like to add?
No, sir. Mr. Chairman, commission members, my name is Steve Ferris with Wilton Acquisition. Yes, Mr. Wilton, unexpectedly is a little under the weather tonight, but I concur with the staff report, and hopefully we can get things moving along.
Any questions by the commissioners? There being none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I hope Mr. Wilton gets better soon. I'm sorry, Mr. Weaver, did you have a question?
No.
Oh.
No, thank you, sorry.
Yeah, I don't have any questions. I was just still, still having some concerns about adding additional rooftops and reducing this back to residential from a commercial perspective without having anything for the residents to do. That's not being included in this plan. No, 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 you spoke about the park, not at the park, I'm sorry, sidewalks going around the area. But I'm just still a little concerned about the residents actually move into this facility. They seem to be confined to, they would be confined to the area with not having activities, and they would have to resort on other areas for their activities. I think I mentioned in the last meeting, if I were living in that facility and wanted to have a holiday, have my family there for the holiday, I wouldn't have parking areas for them, I wouldn't have any event activity space. I would like to, you know, I would have liked to have seen the site plan build out a little bit differently to at least consider them. And then again, the main thing is the additional rooftops with the concern that we have here in the county with all of the other things that are going on. That's my comment.
Yes, sir, and I can appreciate that. We still have what I'm going to call on the south side of Armistead Drive that is undeveloped. And I know that they were looking at doing some commercial development there. Maybe there's a possibility in the future that some of that land or that area could be devoted to parking considerations and/or some type of recreational or activity.
I certainly would love to see that, but I would like to see that in the site plan as well, because, you know, this property has been zoned commercial for over 20 years now, and nothing has been done there. And again, we added additional rooftops, and we already have county concerns with rooftops coming into the community. That's, so if that could be, you know, if the site plan could be modified or included, I know that's additional cost and time and everything else. Again, that's my take on how I feel about, we definitely need to see newer facilities in the county. I just would have liked to see that built out a little differently.
And I share your concerns, Mr. Young, and we can only ask that the future development south of Armistead Drive be given some consideration for that if possible, if it can be worked in. I think it would be greatly appreciated not only by the commission and the board, but also by the citizens of the county, and that's who we're trying to look out for. So if you would please pass that along and see what maybe can be done, would appreciate it. Thank you. All right, again, Mr. Rollins, this is your.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Are you, are you requesting that the applicant adjust his site plan?
I don't know at this stage that we can ask for that. It may be a legal answer to that, and I would have to defer to a legal expert.
Expert may be a generous term, but if it's a conditional zoning application, those are voluntary proppers. So if there was going to be a modification to the general development plan, that would come at, you know, the offering of the applicant, there would not be a requirement element for the planning commission to, to put in. But concerns can be noted with respect to how any commissioner votes or with a recommendation conditionally to the board.
Okay. So I think if I'm correct, what was just stated to me is that we could have the applicant conditionally say that they would do some of this additional data that we want done without starting the whole process over again, which I don't want to stop the process. But I think what has been stated here, which was very well stated, these people are confined to these areas, and, you know, I'm now older than most of the people in this room. I like to know that there's a place that I could walk or take my dog to the dog park or whatever, right? And I just think that when they give us something like this, they're asking us only to be concerned with the housing and the housing development. But I think as commissioners, we have a right to say, well, you know, I think maybe you want to add some additional open space for whatever reasons, okay? So I mean, I don't know how we handle that legally. I have no idea.
Mr. Pennington, correct me if I'm wrong, but this rezoning does not have any effect on the area that is undeveloped on the south side of Armistead Drive. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. The 10 acres to the south of Armistead Drive would remain zoned commercial. And Mr. Weaver, to your question, you could ask for, you could ask for them to make changes, but they don't have to, have to be voluntary. And so you can't require them to add in recreation areas. You could say it could be nice, and then it's up to them if they wanted to add a recreation area or not.
Understood, understood. Thank you.
Would it be, would it be proper to defer this until we see if there is a change or, since one piece of property does not affect the other?
The, the planning commission has 100 days from the public hearing to make a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors. So if, if it is within that 100-day timeframe, there is discretion to postpone consideration if there are additional factors that the commission feels are not adequately mitigated by the conditional zoning proppers. But outside of that 100-day timeframe, a recommendation is required, whether it's a recommendation for denial because their impacts aren't adequately mitigated, or if it's a recommendation for approval with a statement that, you know, there are certain elements that the commission wishes were better addressed.
All right, so, so we can still defer it, and we still have plenty of time, I believe.
I would defer to Craig or Leon as to when we are in the 100 days.
We are only 30 days into the 100 days. You could defer if you would like, or like Mr. Havilin said, you can motion to send it to the board, but note to the applicant that you would like to see these other items. It'd be up to them to add them or not. They could add them before they got to the board, or they could leave the project as it is. So you could go either way here.
All right, sir. Thank you, Mr. Pennington.
Mr. Chairman, maybe the applicant might would want to see if they have anything to say about that or any suggestions, comments. Is that okay?
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Again, my name is Steve Ferris. Yes, we could, we could take a look at some of those things. You know, I wasn't aware that those things were coming up, but we, we do this all the time. We can, we can, you know, you guys can defer tonight, or you could send it on to the board and in the 30 days or whatever the time period is, we can take a look at open space, dog parks. I don't know exactly how much area we have, but we could get our engineer, Bay Design or Bay Companies, and take a look at this if you prefer doing that. And again, you can defer it, or you could send it on to the board, and we can make those changes in the meantime. But we certainly be willing to take a look at it, and I understand where you're coming from.
Mr. Chairman, I think based on what the applicant has openly said, I think I would like us to defer this at this particular time and let the applicant come back with maybe a change in plan or something like that that relates to some of our concerns.
Is that a motion, sir?
Well, or in that case, I'll make that a motion.
And I'll second that motion.
Motion by Mr. Weaver, seconded by Mr. Young to defer this till our next meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it unanimously. Yes, sir, if you would please carry that back to Mr. Wilton. We would appreciate it ever so much. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
No problem. Let's see here. Mr. Pennington, do we have any unfinished business?
No, that was the unfinished business. Now we have new business of the text amendment.
All right, sir, we have a public hearing. If you would please announce the protocol.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The purpose of a public hearing is for the Caroline County Planning Commission to listen carefully to the verbal expression, position, and opinion from the citizens of Caroline County. Public hearings are not question and answer sessions or debates, and all statements should be addressed to the chair. When members of the public offer comment, they need to clearly state their name and voting district prior to making their comments. Applicants or representatives of the applicant will be allowed 15 minutes to introduce information regarding the matter advertised for public hearing. All comments are to be pertinent to the issue being considered. Persons speaking at public hearings are respectfully requested to keep comments brief, not to exceed three minutes, and to address only those issues pertinent to the matters advertised for public hearing. After the public hearing has been closed, the applicant or representatives of the applicant will be allowed 10 minutes to address any issues identified by the public.
Thank you, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to open the public hearing regarding SO 012024.
Would you like staff report first?
That's not what you, that's right. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. This text amendment to the subdivision ordinance, if you remember approximately 18 months ago, we had ordinance changes to the zoning ordinance and the subdivision ordinance regarding Chesapeake Bay portion of our ordinance. This was because of DEQ doing a review of our ordinance and requiring us to change some language in there and add some new language. After another review by DEQ, they asked us to clean up and clarify some of the items in the Chesapeake Bay ordinance. And so this text amendment is to clean up the items that DEQ is requiring us to clean up and add to the subdivision ordinance.
Thank you, sir. Public hearing regarding this matter is now open. Is there anyone wishing to speak? Is there anyone wishing to speak regarding this matter? Please come forward, state your name and your voting district, please.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, Kevin Collins, Reedy Church. I just wanted to go on record and state that the Chesapeake Bay is a treasure to us all here in the state of Virginia. Just Tuesday night at this very room, the Caroline County Board of Supervisors has approved unanimously to send a letter to the state asking for scenic river designation study of the North Anna, which, as we know, dumps directly into the Chesapeake Bay watershed. So I just wanted to say, I think anything we can do to strengthen the language around the protections of the Chesapeake Bay watershed is a positive in Caroline County. And I also wanted to thank you guys for the work that you do. Unfortunately, the Board of Supervisors sometimes doesn't think you guys know what you're talking about. And I think it's a disservice to all of you that sit up here to have the members who selected you to sit in these chairs disregard your opinions, and I, I think it's wrong. So thank you, guys, for your thoughtful considerations on the matters in this county, and have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Is there anyone else wishing to speak?
Good evening, Chairman Schwartz and members of the Planning Commission, Mary Hodge, Bowling Green District. On the Chesapeake Bay regulations, I just wanted to make an announcement also that last night in Hanover County, their Board of Supervisor denied 7.0 a solar application on 1,500 acres along the North Anna River, which also drains into the Chesapeake Bay. So further adding two protections for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak? Anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing no one coming forward, public hearing is now closed. Commissioners, would be any discussion? Is there a motion regarding this matter?
Chairman, I move that we add this to the, change the reading of this amendment to include the Chesapeake Bay preservation area in SO 012024.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Rollins, seconded by just about everyone on the commission. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Motion carries. This matter will be forwarded to the Board of Supervisors with a recommendation of approval.
Mr. Chairman, the only other matter that would be appropriate for the commission to consider is the initiation of the zoning ordinance amendment.
Thank you, sir. Gentlemen, there is a motion that the Planning Commission initiate amendments to the zoning ordinance to amend Article 10, Industrial District M1, to change data center uses to those uses requiring a special exception. The consideration of such amendments being required by the public necessity, convenience, general welfare, and good zoning practices warrants. This is the same matter that we are going to address on the 8th. Is that correct, sir?
Yes, sir. And you would just need to authorize public hearing for that text amendment, that proposed text amendment.
So commissioners, this matter must be advertised for public hearing, and we are going to have a public hearing on October the 8th in this room in conjunction with Board of Supervisors. So we do need a motion authorizing the planning staff to advertise. Yes, sir.
Just, just clarifying that before we get into the scheduling matter, that the initiation motion receive a vote, that there would be a motion to initiate as you read.
All right, so you simply need a motion to initiate?
Correct. The motion that you read, that would need a vote by the Planning Commission.
All right, and to be absolutely correct, all we need to do is to vote to authorize the. Alright, and to be absolutely correct, all we need to do is to vote to authorize the advertisement. Is that correct or? What motion do you need from us, sir?
The motion that you read.
Yes, sir.
That is, someone needs to just put that to the commission.
Okay. So I will put that in the form of a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by the Chair, seconded by the Vice Chair. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Motion carries.
Thank you. Um, and then as far as scheduling the meeting, that can be done by the chairman's directive or the, you know, direction of a quorum of the commission. So that would be a special meeting on the 8th.
Yes, sir. We will have a quorum. I've already uh, polled the, the commission. Uh, there will be five of us there. So we will have a quorum for that meeting.
Just to clarify, as far as setting that special meeting, that can be called by the chairman or it can be called by a quorum of the commissioners. So I just wanted to make sure we were clear that you were calling a special meeting for October 8th.
Yes, sir. In fact, I did that last week via telephone.
Okay, okay, great. Perfect.
But we are going to formally put it onto the record now.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Are we going to see this proposed amendment before we go to that meeting?
That would be a question for, I believe, either Mr. Pennington or Mr. Hughes.
Are we going to see this before we go to this combined meeting?
Uh, you'll get a packet, just like, you'll get a packet just like your regular meeting, uh, the week before the meeting. And so it'll be in a packet. You read through your information just like normal.
So Friday, we should have that?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, yes. I'd like to go to a meeting unless I can see what I'm going to meet on. Thank you.
No problem.
Thank you, Mr. Pennington. Alright, so there is a motion, I'm making a motion to adjourn to the October 8th, 2024 joint meeting with the Board of Supervisors.
I second a motion.
Motion by the Chair, seconded by the Vice Chair. All those in, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it unanimously. This meeting is adjourned.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.